No. Okay, so just to set the tone for the conversation, I would share a quick slide, just something to with some data on the IELTS. Examination numbers just for us to see. You'll find something very interesting and I'm sure it's a spoil a lot of conversation. As we, as we, as we move on. So, once I finish sharing the slides and we speak through the slides, we would then have, it's open for all of us to contribute, they should be know, they should be know. If you have people doing your video, do so, if you're not happy with the video, you can just use audio alone. Feel free to. Use whatever works for you. So, could you confirm if you could see my slides? Screen?
Yeah, I can see it was on the screen.
Anyone?
Yeah, I can't see the slides.
You can't.
I can't see the slide.
Yeah, I can see that.
So, okay, okay. Thanks. So, just in case my. Just in case my it slows down, let's, just let me know.
Is it me or is the audio fuzzy?
Yeah, the audio seems to be fuzzy for someone. Well, let's just, let's just turn off our mics, let me quickly speak to the slides, because I think the most important part is the discussion section where we bring ideas and questions and everything. But let me just quickly walk through the slides. At any moment, you cannot hear me, just type in the chat or unmute and say something, just so I know that I'm being heard. So, you guys are welcome to the town hall meeting. So, just quick outline, I talk about policy shapers, of course, policy shapers, organization that helping. Helping to push all of this and trying to be the face for it, even when they want to fight us, they should come and fight partnership. And I'll give you guys a quick context of proficiency testing and its history. And I'll talk about why it's important to reform this policy. And also, we'll look at activities we've done so far and then in particular parts, I bring them in session and then we'll close the next step. So, maybe for five minutes tops, we should be done, or less. So, about policy shapers, if you're my team member that here, so. I'm sure they can. Support what I'm saying, but we, we launched last year. The idea was, we wanted to give you platform for young people to be able to share their ideas. But everyone had the idea, but sometimes the idea is structured in a way that makes sense for policymakers. So, several policies had, because to us came together and thought that it would be more right to set up where young people in Nigeria, because this idea since very unique to us, the ideas, you know, this platform and pretty much just citizen engagement and leadership engage. We've had about two forty-one sign-ups, we do have a lot of work to do in the GJ community and that's quite an awful thing to do. Before the end of the year and any, any next year, as we're planning in Nigeria-wide policy hackathon, we have about fifteen policy ideas published thus far, mostly from team members, because of what we've been doing and a few from other people. Our strategy is to be open source, everything is open, anyone can come up there to read ideas and share their own ideas.
I think we lost him.
Sorry, sorry, guys, you guys lost me, yeah? Where did you, where did you stop? Oh, where, what did you hear last?
Your strategy.
I think the hackathon or the whatever.
Oh, okay, open source, oh, okay, okay, sorry, sorry, guys, so I'll try to move fast, because my internet seems to be shitty here. I'm not in the office today, so, yeah, so that's, that's a quick, I mean, you can check out the website for more, for more information about policy shapers. Yeah, we've taken part in quite a number of hackathons, last week, we had a, we hosted a session at the Creative Commons Global Summit. Where we shared information about our research on open data and virtual learning and stuff like that. And then, of course, our members belong to several organizations and boards and fellowships and scholarships and the likes, yeah. These are the core team members, but of course, like, like I mentioned, we're planning to make sure we engage engage a lot more people, so that we have thematic heads and people leading various policy thematic areas. And that's something we're working on as well. Okay, so just moving to the meat of the conversation. So, context, right, as we know, I'm sure you guys, most of you or all of you will know about the scramble for Africa colonializing ETC, ETC, ETC. The map by the left talks about, or shows you in a graphical form, the countries that colonized Africa. So, you have West France, you have Britain, Portugal, Germany, ETC, ETC. However, why this map is important, because it shows you how colonizing impacted our language, right? For the countries, or most of the countries that were colonized by Britain, their language became English. For most of the ones colonized by France, their language became French, you know, Angola speaks Portuguese. So, all of these countries, Saudi Arabia, I mean, up there, impacted a lot of the whole of Northern Africa. And so, all of these countries left indelible marks on the, on the continent. And if you look at the map by the right, that shows you all of the English-speaking countries on the continent. People who have English as their language, that has English runs their public systems, their schools, their hospitals, everything, right? Now, the IELTS was set up in nineteen eighty, before the IELTS, there was some other exam. That was mostly testing general aptitude, general science, so people who want to work in other, other countries would write this exam, in English-speaking countries, write this exam on physics and literature and stuff like that. It was pretty much like WYAC or Cambridge exam, but it was on a higher level. But it was less emphasis on language. However, in nineteen eighty, language became a thing. And so, the, the language beat of the conversation was then set up. IELTS is owned by three people, three organizations, have the British Council. You have IDP, which is in Australia, sometimes they call themselves IELTS Australia. Then you have University of Cambridge, under the Cambridge Assessment Test. So, the question is, why, why do we think, I mean, this has been here for what, forty-one years? Why do we think we need to reform this policy now? Why do we just go, let's reform this whole thing? What is the, what is the point? So, these, the next two slides will show you some key, some key numbers. Cooley, I think, I'm, I'm not sure Cooley could join us, he was supposed to join us. But Cooley did some great work last year, following my experience with export that went viral on Twitter. Cooley did some, some, some interesting data mining. And we found some interesting things about IELTS in Nigeria, and I was, I was, I was working closely with him then. So, it was very interesting to find most of what came out from that, from that study. First, we found out that seventy-five percent of Nigerians would want to migrate. In fact, that number continues to increase, we have found every year. A friend who, who last year would have, would have told me that they would never ever think of migration. But right now, they're already on their way out. And that percentage continues to increase, especially for those young, young people, for people in the middle class. And so on and so forth. And so, that's, that push has also increased the demand for IELTS, right? There are eleven test centers now across the country. Sometimes, some centers conduct up to five tests in a month. Usually, they will do two tests in a month or one test in a month. But at, at the moment, you have centers going up to five tests in a month. During COVID, I think they went virtual, so you had some people who go to some, some centers. And some other people who were also joining virtually to do some of their tests during the period, yeah? An average of one twenty people, I submitted to write the IELTS test at the center each day. That's, that's just a quick average. The test in Nigeria costs between seventy-five thousand to ninety-two thousand naira, ninety-two thousand eight hundred naira. And then, if you want to get remarked, you pay with fifteen thousand naira fee. And then, someone contacted me on LinkedIn to say that, I think, some Cambridge people thought that she did malpractice and she had to pay one hundred and twenty K for her to write again, or for them to investigate the issue, some funny sounding thing, yeah? So, and then Nigeria's pay, and it's made a sum of five point four fifteen billion to the British Council annually through the IELTS. You might say, ah, that sounds big, but trust me, it is really huge, because he had to do a lot of calculation using information from test centers, IELTS tutors, ETC. And so, this is not, this is not a, this is might even be smaller than what actually comes out of IELTS every year based on the cost. And then, in twenty sixteen to twenty seventeen, examinations contributed to about forty-one percent of the British Council's annual income in Nigeria. I think this second slide is a lot more interesting, because one of our team members got the Chevenness scholarship, and there's some people here might have gotten the Chevenness scholarship. And, and this, this slide sort of just breaks my heart, because, because of the one thousand five hundred beneficial which Chevenness scholarship in one year, usually we get about twelve point seven billion, right? While the UK government makes about two hundred and twenty-eight billion naira from IELTS within the same period. So, what this data shows is that somehow, we are the ones paying for IELTS, because when you calculate, and trust me, this, this was, this was twenty, it's in twenty nineteen. I'm sure between twenty-one, really, the numbers always keep going high from current analysis. So, it just, it just shows you that there's a huge racket, if I, if I could use that as a governmental, it's a huge racket that is going on with the program. And has moved you from its original intent, which was just to test people. Now, it's beyond testing people, of course, fueled by people wanting to leave, people looking for scholarships abroad. It's a city without of Nigerians, crazy, crazy policy. But it just shows as well that this whole thing with the exam expiring, because when it started in nineteen eighty, it doesn't usually expire, when people write the exam. This whole expiration thing became apparent sometime in the early two thousands. And so, with all of the short expiration dates, increasing price is becoming more for business than its original intent. And that is why I think it needs to be discussed, that is, I mean, I don't know about you guys, this Chevenness one just breaks my heart. It means that we are the ones paying for our people to go abroad, but the UK takes a lot of, all of the credits. I'm sure the UK folks will always deny, I, I put this forward to the British Council, I mean, you guys will see eventually in the subsequent slides. I put this one to the British Council, of course, we're denying, oh, no, this is not it, IELTS money is not big, blah, 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 blah. But, I mean, there's usually no concrete answer to the question. And so, when you ask a question and the person just denies, but doesn't give you a concrete answer, it means that there's something somewhere happening. So, that's some interesting data for us to think about. So, activities thus far, quite a few things we've been able to do. Mostly, mostly with policy shapers team. And right now, we know that it's bigger than policy shapers, really, I mean, most of us have jobs. I mean, Kenny has PhD, this one has a scholarship somewhere, someone's in an Emmy somewhere, most of us are scattered all over the place, doing some reading. And so, we had thoughts as well as that, we, we wouldn't be able to do this on our own anymore. And that was why the idea for the tax force, because it doesn't concern just us, it concerns every, every, every single person, just like SaaS. Just like the N, N SaaS movement, it's something that every single person has a story to tell. And whenever I make this post on social media, people are coming up on LinkedIn saying, oh, I have a PhD in English, I was still to write the IELTS exam. So, I said, oh, I was good in the UK, but I still don't need to write the IELTS exam, because I scored two, three years ago and I came back and I went to do a PhD. And they, and they said this and said that. So, most of that activity had mostly been driven by media companies, I'm mostly been trying to put the stories in blogs, I've been on a couple of radio stations. There's BBC News, Olivia, I think she's here, helped us to do a BBC News coverage for, for the, for the issue recently. So, all of that had just mostly been a personal attempt, but I want, I, the position I seen wanted to go beyond just us and beyond individuals. Wanted to be a campaign that is, that is fearless, that is all of us pushing it out together and trying to make change. Yeah, and then I also got on the British Council Board, and this was a deliberate attempt, I mean, of course, my wife knows this. I deliberately got on, applied to get on the board sometime in twenty nineteen, just because I wanted to be in a position where I would be able to understand first of all what's happening inside and also be able to see if it's possible to leverage that position, you know, to cause some sort of change. So, because I believe advocacy has gone beyond just shouting from the outside. So, they're shouting from the outside, but I think that we can find innovative ways to, to, to add internal advocacy of, of some sort. So, it's outside and inside, we are fighting the battle outside and inside and trying to make change on both, on both ends. We've done social media publicity as well, we started this thing with the tax force, which we implement from today. Statement cards, getting people to make statements about it through a Google form, and we add those things to some cards and publish that out there. People have been doing social media posts, I mean, Sebo and all the people that are out there posting posts there. But the question now, and that's in the conversation for today, beyond all of this, all of this is great. We had brought it up, up there to public consciousness, but beyond all of this, what do we think? And that's our, that's, that's where we spend our time today, what do we think we can do to push the campaign forward? What ideas do we have? How can we, how can we make it work? Just, I mean, what, what comes to your mind? What do you guys think we can do? So, that's my presentation to you guys, and I'm now open for questions, answers, feedback, contribution, ideas. I'll be taking notes down along with other policy shapers members. So, yeah, so the ball is in your court, my best. And, yeah, and, and the mood of, of conversation, anybody feel free to unmute, except we have too many people that are thinking, but anyone can feel free to unmute and just speak. Open us up.
Yeah, so there's no one is talking, I guess, I will start there. So, my name is Kenny and I'm part of the policy shapers group. You know, it's just following up what Ben said, sometimes it's very infuriating. And I think the most disappointing part of it is the, the, the logic that, like, understanding of English language after passing this affirmation expires after three years. It's quite, I'm wearing mask because I'm in the lab, so it's quite, it's quite painful. So, I think that a great social media presence is needed and in a way, how we can, like, ensure that people post these and see these in a very logical perspective. One thing I've also, I've also seen is that it tends to reply and think it's more serious when they have been called out online. And this require, like, you know, like, effort from all of us. So, I think the statement card is something that would be good, but we should have a more, a more coordinated post. At a particular set by, with a particular hashtag, with the traffic become aligned in a, in a, like, in a more very specific way, imagine somebody posting in the morning, somebody posting in the afternoon, they could enough. So, at times, I work with, like, people in different continents, in different places, posting almost at the same time. I think that will also cheer some level of traffic and also advise now friends to post. And just also mentions what somebody is on your group, like, we are calling for, like, and then to this topic, also have to, like, watch our English, when we are posting these stuffs. Myself, I make a lot of crazy mistakes, so I need to either use grammar, I guess, to check all of these things, because it's also giving leverage on some of these persons to, 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 like, say one of the things, and the real truth is, like, I'm in the US, even some of them are not really good English writers, like, they misspeak it to them, that's what, you see them using so many English services for editing. So, I think the basic aim of it is that this, we can communicate clearly and, like, people are doing their stuffs all our way, everything that's been in this language. Doesn't just make any sense for this to continue, firstly pushing, like, the frontiers of rewriting their songs again. After a damn expiration period, it's absolutely abnormal. So, I, I'm a fan of the campaign and I would just advise that we should try to leverage everything we can do to make sure that this is a success. And we can also have recommendations, and this is where policy shapers recall me. So, we want a framework that will be guided by data and plus by practices that, that can guide what are the future directions for these things to go. Because, so we have direction, if, if you are going to hand it, then what, what is the, maybe the best way to see that? People that have been admitted to schools or scholarships, really understanding this communication. So, we also have some of this framework and I think everybody's welcome to bring ideas, policy shaper is open source. Yeah, he knows there are ways to join the team to bring more of your ideas, not necessarily now, no pressure on anyone. But I think beyond fighting for the end, IELTS stuff, what are the alternatives should we also have in mind to ensure that, okay, this communication barriers that's in code, they are figured out, which is a scam, I don't know. It's also not there for people like that going to travel. So, these are just my thoughts and everybody should do his contributions and say something.
Thank you, thank you so much, Kenny, really, really wonderful thoughts. Yeah, does anyone else want to jump in?
Okay, I like to go, I like to jump in.
Okay, okay, Joe.
All right, bro. Okay, all right, just a quick one. I have four points to make, really, I think the first is more of a question. But that's just by the way, because I kind of didn't understand your slide on, on the Chevenness scholarship, the, the, and the percentage of it that do it. IELTS or something, I just, I didn't understand that slide, so that's just by the way. But for the contribution, I like to, the first point is addressing the root of the, of the problem, yeah? I recall, I think one of your posts, yeah, there was one of the, there's always schools that refer to the fact that they only take schools or they don't take some countries of the list, one, ones they can verify. I don't know, I think it's on literacy level or something. So, I think that would, that would be weird, what's the word to use now? It's addressing the root of it, really. If you can get to understand why some of these countries put up this policy, then we can walk around it. Or you can advocate something different. So, the first is getting to the root of the problem, knowing why some of the schools use the strategies and then you can walk around it. So, that, that's the first part, knowing the root of the problem. On the second part is now trying to, so in this, in this role, I'm trying to play the devil's advocate in this role, really. And the question is, because typically, schools will want to, of course, we're going to push campaigns and all, yeah? But they want to see, like, okay, what, what are the metrics? What's, give me a valid reason why I should, you know, think of this requirement for people that I'm admitting into my school. So, in that way, we also need to be able to play the devil's advocate and see from the school's action. And while, of course, I, I think one of it would be what the last speaker said, which is extending the validity, validity, for instance, of the, of the of the exam, because I, I won't believe that, I mean, once, if you can speak English, can speak English, once you take this there. So, it doesn't make sense after, two years after, and then on, if I need to talk to you for, for some reason, I have to go take test again. Does that mean my English declined the last two years or something? So, that's something that can be done, where it's going to be a win-win for both directions, for both sides. It's win-win for the schools that insist, but they don't have to think the second time, that's number one. The second part has to do with, again, playing devil's advocate, is trying to change your intention, yeah? So, I mean, for a couple of times, I've met one of five people here that, when I speak with them, the first impression I get is, oh, your, your English is good. And I'm like, initially, I think it was a compliment, or the idea we think, I'm like, why is everyone saying the same thing? And that's because many of them have the idea that, oh, this guy's living, this guy's living modern houses, they probably don't have cell phones and all that stuff. I see a friend of mine that, he went, he went out with a friend yesterday and when he came back, that was the same thing here. And that's because, and of course, that's, that's because of what they hear from the media, or what they see around, or the idea that, oh, they are the saviors, they're going to Africa to go change things or the now this kind of thing, and that's because, and that would mean that we also have to make conscious efforts to change this narrative. For instance, I mean, and also, I understand that, I mean, for a lot of what I want to get breaking to, I mean, conscious of other countries outside the globe, I know people's statement of, statement of purpose, where they started writing some very interesting stories about how they grew up not having electricity, still living in such interesting places, just so that they can get in. And those are some of the narratives that people read and then they run with it. And so, they want to believe that we, we don't understand the English language, we don't, and we probably don't go to good schools, and that's why we can't speak well. So, the owners also lies on us to try to change the orientation the little way we can, like, is it pushing policies, advocating, saying these things out, so that this will understand that. Come on, Ben, I mean, Nigeria, we speak English. It's not so, when you see Nigeria speaking good English, it's not, it's not, it's not outlier, it's a norm, that kind of thing. So, that's, that's one way, so in that way, I think advocacy, posts, making deliberate efforts with many people doing the same thing, I feel that would make more impact also, so in that way, so in that regard, I feel changing orientation, trying to push, extended validity, for instance. The third part I made was trying to find out the root of the problem, why this could want to insist on, on, I mean, yeah, whatever, I think so many say. So, if we can look at it in those three ways, I feel like, I mean, we can be able to push ahead and, and no, no effect to the system, we're looking at, that's about all for me.
Thanks, thanks, thanks a lot, bro. Just, just to make a quick clarification before Ben speaks. So, yeah, so Joey, Joey made a very good point and he raised some very good issues that we also need to think, think about. One thing that, I mean, she's speaking on the British Council's board and also speaking with other stakeholders. One thing that had come up clearly had always been, what is your ask? People always say, what is your ask? I know there are two, the two levels of acts that we can, that we can get, and it's something we can find tune in here together. One of them will be, after them, but I don't. But that is in a night in public policy, when you work in public policy, when you come up with policies, really, your policy recommendations, you always want to two levels of recommendations. You have the ideal recommendation and then the compromise recommendation, so that, okay. If, even if you can't do that, one that seems to be, how about we do this? And then, as Joey said, there'll be a win-win for both, for both people. So, the, the compromise one could, doesn't expire totally, that's, that's, I think that's a genuine crime, that's, that's exempt, and if the exam has to continue.
We lost again.
Yeah, I think it's.
We'll join back soon, Nigerian netto.
Yeah, I mean, Nigerian, that's all with disgrace, you know.
Definitely, I love that response, Gary.
I definitely agree with you.
He's not stereotyping.
I mean. Okay, so, so, yeah, so, did you guys, did you guys hear me? Did you hear what I was saying about the compromise policy and the ideal policy?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, yeah, so just as people are speaking, that, that's something that we can be thinking about as well. So, we can, we can take the next person, or do you guys want me to quickly explain what?
Sure.
Do you guys want me to quickly explain what Joey was asking in these slides? So, let me just quickly share that, so just give me a minute, so everyone has an understanding.
I mean, is that, can I speak now?
Yeah. Sorry, just, just give me, so. Yes, 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 you can, but just give me, let me just make a clarification. If you guys can hear me, sorry, I don't even.
Can hear you clearly.
What is that I was speaking to, yeah? Chevenness scholarship, about one thousand four hundred people around the world. Usually, what they would spend on all of those people is somewhere around twelve point seven.
Yeah, largely unclear, like.
What, what, what? Okay, I see, hear me now.
No, like, it's, I wear for my hands, it's really bad, like, I can't barely piece two words together.
Sorry, do you want to type in your thoughts?
Um, he is off the, the meeting, so maybe when he gets back, we could share that.
Give me the next person, can I, I don't feel nice, neutral, congested, my life.
Yeah, I think that, yeah, if someone else can talk, if other people, if the other member of the team can also take notes, so I think someone else can go, while we wait for.
All right, okay, so, hi, guys, hi, I, I, my name is Bartis, I've not done an IELTS before, but I'm a huge fan of the likes of Agbeni Stipho, when they post things about. I've not done an I O T before, but I'm a huge fan of, um, the likes of Agbeni Stipho, when they post things about I O T. And I'm very sure that there is no how one day I would also, um, have to write it. But I'd like to share from personal experience, um, some weeks ago, a very close family friend was going to, she got a, a scholarship for her masters in the UK, and she's expected to write the I O T exam. She's been preparing for it for months and stuff, so on our way to the exam, um, venue that day, you know, towards, we're just happy that she was not kidnapped, you know, um, she, she entered the public transport, and they just, they collected every damn thing on her, and they used, um, rob to rob her face and stuff like that, and throw her out of the car. That was in Lagos. And, um, she had to, luckily for her, she knows her husband's number of ID, so she had to like, walk down to a bank and get one of the security guys' number and code her husband, you know, explaining what happened. Apparently, it was actually her husband that even um, drove her down to where she took the cab from, because he also had to go and drop off the kids at school. So the long story short, even with everything that happened to her, that money, she was still able to get to the exam venue on time, she was able to write her I O T exam. And according to her, she says she did very well in her result, because I think she did it like twice, I think the tent was two times there, but I don't know. So she did the two times, no, the result came out and she did very great. So, um, if such person now moves to UK, do you think the person would want to come back to Nigeria and want to come and apply for maybe PhD again, and have to go back and have to write I O Ts again, because their first experience she had wasn't so favorable. So I think, um, from my own point of view, um, as someone that looks forward to writing an I O T, I think we need to also, while we call for the reform, we need to also look at how accommodating the environment is, because I, I, I've come to the conclusion that insecurity in Nigeria has actually affected a lot of people. And she's actually planning to relocate to the UK with her family and, you know, her husband and her kids. And you don't expect such people to come back to this country. If they want to come back, maybe just like holiday and they're back to the UK. So I think, um, while we call for the reform, we also need to make emphasis on security and how maybe the exams can be more, um, digital, so that people would not have to, uh, people would not have to face, um, some uncertainties, just because they want to write the exam. And then, because she's strong, she didn't really go deep into trauma. It could have been anybody else, and the person might be so weak that he or she would just go back to her house and not be able to write the exam. So that's like what I want to like, um, share first, so that we can all like, come up with sustainable solutions, so that we just don't talk, talk, talk. What are the recommendations that we're gonna be giving? And mine would be that there is need for us to make emphasis on the all insecurity, how it is affecting the life of this applicant, psychologically, mentally, and the likes. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Balikis. I didn't think he was back yet. And I have taken down notes of everything you said. I'm so sorry about your post, Fred. And, yeah, you are quite right, even though we would definitely blame the British government in a way for the insecurity of the country. But having, like, these are some of the things why we also have to travel nonstop, because of, like, same class issues. So I guess that's also the one of the worry or introductory part of the policy. So thanks for that. So the floor is also open to anyone, like, that want to, like, say one or two things. I'm not sure if he's been back yet, he was trying to explain something. So I think you can go ahead, sure.
Can I speak, or, um, speaking?
Yes, you can go ahead, uh.
Okay, hi, my name is Akilachi, and, um, I'm the one that, let me try to lower my hands. Yes, hi, everybody. Um, my name is Akilachi, I, I know you Ben, so that's how I got to know about the campaign, the Reform I L T S campaign. Um, I'm also a bridge fellow at the N E S G with him as well, and, uh, I'm a PhD student here in Nigeria. Um, so I'm new to policies, shaping policies and how they work. Uh, so I decided to, I'm passionate about the I O Ts, the removing I L T S first of all, but I also wanted to use this as a learning opportunity to see the life cycle of how a policy is formed from advocacy up until implementation, hopefully. Because I, I want to hope that we will end in a favorable end, which is implementation. So, um, while they were speaking, I, I kind of joined the live a bit later on, twenty minutes after you started, but some things that I took down, even before he Ben talked about the ideal policy and the co- compromise policy, I'd already written what I asked. Number one, is it that we're scrapping I L Ts, no more I L Ts, that's what we're asking for? And the compromise is that, okay, no renewals, like, once someone has written ones, that's like the least thing we're going to accept by way of implementation. So what are the alternatives? Like, these are those thoughts that came to my, my mind, right? These are the thoughts that came to my mind. Please, say, no more I L T S, right? I think that, um, it's still okay to ask for it, and I, I believe that, Y X certification, um, English in Y X should suffice as an alternative document for, to prove your English proficiency. So that was one of the solutions I jotted down, like, saying that, okay, we can use our Y, um, our English results in Y X or NECO, whichever one you wrote at the secondary school level, to replace, as a replacement document for proving, uh, uh, English proficiency. So maybe they might say, oh, a, a minimum of a B two in, it'd be just, I don't know what the grading is like now, but a minimum of that is what we need for your admission or, or things like that. So that's just, I mean, thinking solution wise now, that might be one of the things we can come up with in saying, maybe in the recommendations part. Then, um, I'm also, I also want to know, like, this is a question I'm asking now. Which schools or which countries really do ask for I L Ts? Because I'm sort of confused. I did my masters in the UK, I never, I didn't write I L Ts. So I'm hearing now that is it that, is it a new thing that you can now ask for the I L Ts as well? I think it's, it's good to know, so we know where exactly we're pushing our, um, pushing, what, what exactly we're pushing to. So I didn't know, it's surprising to know that some UK schools are also asking for I L Ts. Yeah, then, um, the tools, talking about the tools for this reform, there's a petition link going about, I signed the petition, I don't know how many of us have signed the petition, I shared it as well. I don't know how many of those I shared it, but I wanted to ask, what is the aim of that petition? If we get the amount of signatures we're looking for, how do we use that? What's the advantage of that petition? Is it something we can use to fight or, um, negotiate? I need to know what exactly are we're doing, what a petition, uh, what is the advantage of use of that petition? Please, if I'm asking very basic questions, forgive me, because I'm very new to the whole policy thing. It's exciting and I'm learning as well. Then, um, the media campaigns obviously were doing very great, and that end. Thank you to whoever did the BBC thing, it was amazing when I saw the videos, I was really, really impressed at the reach. Then, even, I don't know if he's still on this call, he mentioned something about an Abuja meeting, he mentioned, so I wanted to know uh, what's the progress on that, set an Abuja meeting to engage government. So I think, yes, it is time, we might have, um, we might have, I think we might have all we need right now to actually push to engage government. So let's know what we need. Do we need, who, who are the people in Abuja? Which office exactly are we going to? So we can, I think we're ready to actually engage and know what, um, what exactly ought to be done. Even, you also told me that the British Council is saying that, um, they need proof that fifty-one percent of the country can speak English or something like that, and then it's the government that's going, so all of that, we need to be clear on that. I think that's still about research, but I think we're doing fine so far, and that, that is all I have to say. Add questions and suggestions in between, so, yeah, basically, thank you, thank you, guys.
Yeah, those are fantastic questions. I think you Ben is back, I'm not sure, but I can say.
Yeah, can you? Can you guys hear me? Is, is it clear?
Okay, okay, great, we can, can hear you.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Kelly. Really, really wonderful questions, and, and thanks Kenny for, for standing in when I, when I fell out. So wo- wonderful questions, um. I'll try to attempt the ones that I remember, if Kenny remembers any ones, we can also reply to that. So on the, on the Abuja meeting, you know, when that's, um, legit blog story went out, I told you that the, uh, one of the first secretaries in the Ministry of Foreign Affairs got in touch. It also say, oh, he, he had seen this story, and he's wondering what the Foreign Affairs Ministry could do about it. We had a conversation on it, because he called me one day when I was in the office. And it's obvious that they are also not sure how to approach it, and so that was why they asked for a meeting in Abuja. Um, uh, sometime in October, the week of the twelfth. So between twelve and, uh, fourteen or fifteen, um, we're, we're supposed to schedule a meeting. I would, I would speak with him early next week to work on dates. I wanted, I wanted the data confirmed for folks in Abuja, if I was able to make the meeting. Um, I would, I would share that information in the group, yeah. For the, for the, uh, what's it called, the petition. So, so petitions usually are, um, ways to get the interest of, so if it's in the UK, the House of Commons or the House of Lords, or in Nigeria, supposedly, the National Assembly, but we know, I'm saying supposedly, because we know that things are usually follow, um, follow due, due process. Because if a certain issue gets a certain number of, um, signatures on the petition, the National Assembly is supposed to be forced to have a deliberation on that particular issue. But we know that things are usually work like that. However, this particular petition is directed to the British Council. It wasn't even started by, by us. There's a group called This Is Africa. Um, I'd been in touch with them a couple of times last year, that the ones who started the petition, and I saw that the petition had gone really far. And so last year, I just thought, what was the point of trying to start my own petition, like, like, is it, is it a competition? So we just, we just thought it would, it would best to share theirs, and the target is to get one hundred and fifty thousand signatures, and once that is done, we're hoping that the petition can also be shared with the House of, House of Commons in the UK as well. Just trying to make sure that even the government, because the Home Office says that they are not aware that we can speak English. So we're just hoping that even the government as well, they can also understand, um, and, and also get some information from the petition. So that's, that on the petition, um, what's, there's one more question you asked on, something I, I forgot to. What, what is that asked, right? Was that your question?
Yeah, okay, I, I just did some of our questions down.
Okay.
It's very good. Congrats, you're going to be there, but I think I.
Okay, go on, go on Kenny, if you have one.
Okay, so I want some of our access, like, what are the alternatives that we may have for these things, because she was in, she did her masters in the UK. There's a way you read some school remarks for that. I think I may have an answer to that, and one of the reasons. So yeah, yeah, in the US, other schools require tofu, even though I wrote it, most of the stuff like to. I know that I got admission today, wouldn't like one that. So what they do is when you get here, you just like appear before a panel, you're going to do a teaching assistance, and they will just like, actually, normal question, if they believe your qualification is not quite enough, they actually train a room in like a few weeks of office class, and that's just all. And oftentimes, most students pass it ninety-five percent of the classes, and they pass the competition stuff. So the tofu of it is already composed, at least, based on the schools I applied to. So these are some of what other alternatives, like, you've seen the student can, can write where, maybe, if they did have interview. Yeah, some supplementary courses that the state can take, that is compulsory, that may positively necessarily be like upscale. Their proficiency, the way you want it to be. So these are better alternatives, and they can learn from the assistant institutions in the US. And Indiana does this, as your Facebook does, this, and other places, this, and that. So these are some of the things you may like possibly jot down, and also for your comp, but it's not so, the one thing I also learned in my literature experience, and this is one of the things that you started a big ask, and you come into a compromised thing, and that's just what we've been saying. So we can't just sit there, we want them to like, stop the old expensive stuff, or reduce the price, like, the campaign face should be ended that. And when this is getting more traction, they'll be forced to engage in dialogue. And who knows, we may even try to get it to end, or it's, it's also a big, if you get to what they're spending stuff to promote. And also maybe the price to produce significantly, considering the country. So those are some of our, which we are looking at, but we're also open to alternatives, and I'm sure do more of this, like, really, we have good ideas as we're trying to do the policies. So I guess that's all the questions you had.
Thanks a lot. Thanks a lot Kenny, we, we wonderful thoughts, thanks a lot. I just wanted to ask, before, before Confort speaks, I just wanted to ask, Olivia, I wanted to add something. By the way, Olivia is the journalist who had the wonderful idea to ask the BBC to talk about English proficiency. I mean, I didn't even think, when she told me about it, I just thought, these guys would just shoot this thing down, I didn't think it was going to be possible. But, um, I don't know, she did her magic, and she was able to convince the BBC to criticize themselves, sort of. And so I'm, I'm just wondering if she has anything to say, I see that she's on the call.
Hi, hi, can you hear me?
Hi, yes, yes, we can.
Oh, okay. I mean, it wasn't, I don't think it was that difficult, actually, because it's not N T A, so they don't run from the idea that they can do something that's not right. So when I pitched it, it was just, I think the biggest challenge was getting people who were affected and who have compelling stories to tell, really. And I think somebody said something about the British Council saying they needed the, the, the fifty-one percent thing. It wasn't the British Council, it was the UK Home Office. Because, uh, I think the challenge also with that story was, my editors wanted us to be absolutely certain that we got the journalism right. So if we were saying all these big things, and we're saying that we speak English, and they were exploiting people and the rest, we needed right of response, and we reached out to Oxford, because Oxford also has that requirement as well. I think that what they said to me was, they were going to, they were going to also reach out. Everybody was just passing the blame to the UK Home Office, right? They said, well, we have a list, and they say that we should follow this list, and so if your country is not on this list, then you have to write the test. So when we went to the Home Office, it was the Home Office that said they needed proof that at least fifty-one percent of the country's population speaks English. They didn't say how to, how to get the fifty-one percent, or what exactly they needed that proof for, or, or even how they wanted that proof to come. But that's what they said to us, so they're the ones who made that. So I think it's, it's, it's interesting, the point about speaking with governments and finding, especially the, the foreign, the foreign, is it their foreign affairs? I don't know if they're the ones who are in the best.
Ministry of Foreign Affairs, yeah.
But it's absolutely important that, that government can use that response, I can send it to you if you want to, because I think it may be more than we use for the story, so that you know how to engage them. Maybe we'll ask what they mean by fifty-one percent, what, how do you want to get this fifty-one percent number? Yeah, so, so that's it. I'm also interested, somebody mentioned, in seeing how, how, uh, how an idea or how we can go from an idea to actual reality. I think that when that happens, I have the need to do a follow-up story.
Great, thanks, thanks a lot, Oli. Thank, thank you so much for, for your wonderful contribution. And yes, please, for, for the, the email, email to me as well. Um, I think one of the things the First Secretary said was that he was, that, I mean, a- after the top of his head, he, he said he would be, he, he would think the best thing to do would be to ask the Home Office directly, and that was even before we, um, released this story, so. Um, so yeah, so I'm, I'm definitely hoping that's, that's, that would, that would be a good, good word to, to follow. However, I think that, um, hearing from people who have experienced it is going to be very powerful. And will be one of the most important bits, because sometimes government processes can be very slow, but with pressure from social media and from the people who, who are most affected, which is all of us, really, and all of those out there, pressure from all of us will make them act faster, as opposed to, um, just going through their whole bureaucracy and taking years to work around it. So let's, let's into close in the next ten minutes, I mean, we'll be here for one hour plus. Let's take Confi's, um, comments, and anybody else who wants to speak, let's just make it really, really fast, and then, um, we'll discuss next steps and clues.
Um, hi, Ben, um, I guess you were not on the call when I shared, um, the story, but that's fine. I wanted to ask that, okay, yeah. Um, for most of us, we're new to your platform, and, uh, I want to believe that your platform is not just for, um, um, reshaping educational policies, because I am really looking forward to a pressure group that would reshape climate, um, change policy and the like. So what are the, um, how can we, I know a lot of us are new here, so how can we like be a part of this and ensure that as the last speaker said, um, it is moved from the idea and the advocacy to the reality stage. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thanks a lot, Balikis. So I just dropped a link in the chat, um. I, during my presentation, I, I mentioned that we are working very hard on ways to engage, uh, I, during my presentation, I, I mentioned that we are working very hard on ways to engage our community. Uh, we have about two forty people in our community currently, um, but we're looking for ways to increase that and also engage people more. Because we're planning for in Nigeria wide um policy hackathon, and so there'll be a lot of communication back and forth. So the, the quick thing you can do is just to make sure you're signed up on our, on our platform, um. Policyshapers dot com forward slash join, um, and we'll definitely take it off from there, just so we don't, we don't prolong the conversation. Does that?
No.
Does that work? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense, thank you.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. My name is Confort Tanyaga. I am on the Policy Shapers team. I'm actually excited to be here and to be part of this conversation this evening, and I'm glad that. Everyone is thinking around how we can move from idea to, you know, reality. So by way of recommendation, Eben and other members of the Policy Shapers, right, who are here currently. So I would like to say that we should go back to um the drawing board, which is, you know, using the policy memo template. To come up with um, with action points, then develop a theory of change, because one of the most. Um, I think that's my area of e- expertise, right? So, um, so the theory of change gives you like a roadmap on what's. What to do, at what point, what resources you need, you know, at that point, you're, 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 you're outlining your activities. We, we identify our stakeholders, we need to go back, do our stakeholders mapping analysis. How we would engage them and what change we want to see, because even the Ministry of um Foreign Affairs, you mentioned. I mean, before the meeting, it'd be, it'd be glad, it'd be nice to have all of that done, so that as you go in there. They may not have it figured out, they may not even have um a clear picture on the way forward, or as much information as we have right now. So it'd be nice to have this as a document, using the existing template or any other template that works, fit for purpose, right? So that at the end of the meeting, we are also able to set the, the pace. They may not know how to go about it, so a document like that would help on the way forward, and in having that document. I think implementation also begins from there, because that document would have had the urgency statement, all the key activities outlined, and. You know, the way forwards.
Thanks a lot, thanks, thank you so much, Confi, really, really wonderful suggestion. And yes, the Policy Shaper team definitely have to work on the policy memo that. Because has structure and everything, because that's what policymakers can, can take, and that's what they can understand, that's, that's in their, their language, and that's what they can use to. Um, push, push from their own ends for reform. So yeah, so thanks. Chukemeka, you, you, your hand is up. Flora hasn't said anything, Sibor, I know Sibor was speaking, David. I'd like to hear from you as well, doing, everyone, we just, just say something a little bit before we call it closer.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Uh, my name is Chukemeka Oruko, and I'm happy to be here. Um, I've grabbed it, I'm following the process, uh. Oh, the Policy Shapers platform, I think it's last year when it was created uh by Eben and the other team members, so. I think I'm very much impressed, and I, I'm inspired by the great uh progress so far. And most importantly, uh, I'm excited about this new challenge of uh pushing the um. I L T S uh policy reform campaign, and uh I'm happy, I joined the group uh just three days ago. So but before, I noticed that I shared some ideas on the group show, I just wanted to expand on this, because I was having a conversation with Eben. Uh, that, that same day, and I was just getting new ideas about how it can work. So first thing I suggested there was, uh, first of all, we need to, we need to have a clear idea. About uh how, how setting roles can be de- delegated on the team, so that there's no so much burden. Because I noticed that Eben has been doing a lot of the communications, and I think it's quite a lot of stuff on him. So but the, the, the level we are moving now, we need to have a solid plan. On how uh we can build like a team structure for different, like, people have different skills on that WhatsApp group. We have graphic designers there, we have data analysts, we have social media managers, market, market, digital marketing experts, people that know how to use digital tools. To actually do a great media campaign. So I think we need to begin to think about how we can convert the talent we have on the group, on the team right now. To valuable, uh, valuable is, influence and results that's um, we can achieve. And so, um, so first message I suggested to Eben was like, probably we need to create a Google form and get a, people. Get people to actually tell, uh, or, or share their, their, their personal, ability, their personal capacity. Like what the, the skills they have, and what they actually can bring to the, bring to the team. So that uh we can now go back to the drawing board, and as, as the team is trying to put together a policy memo, we can have an idea about how um. The, the skills we have, the talents we have, and the talents we need to, you know, we need to get on, on board. That's the first thing. Then the second thing I suggested was about. Uh, knowing our stakeholders, exactly, I, I'm happy, I just mentioned, uh, stakeholder engagement, which is very, very key. Uh, I know that point you are getting into, sorry, I'm taking a lot of time, let me just run up the next one, less than thirty seconds. Um, even, I don't know if I'm still allowed to talk, uh, so, yes, please, go on, go on, go on. Yes, so, so talking about stakeholder engagement, um, so what's, what's the thing I, I actually was on the group there, two days ago, was that. Uh, what, we are trying to like create a policy, reform a, an educational policy, so. We must not ignore the fact that we need to get a lot of stakeholders within the educational sector on board. Um, to actually back this campaign with public statements that actually could support. For example, if we can get like um vice chancellor's and registrars, and top officials of different universities, of course Nigeria and even across Africa. I think that if you can get them to really, really put in their words in this, it's going to become a lot of, a, a big data that we can use to drive the campaign. Uh, and convince a lot of the other governments, stakeholders, because, um, and then the easiest way to do about that is that. Is what we could put up a template or a structure, and then share it on the WhatsApp group, and then let people begin to think about how they can engage their different alma mater, like, I'm a student. I'm a graduate of U N I P O D, and I believe we have in that group, by, if you have over fifty persons there. On the average, we should have up to twenty universities already represented. So if we can begin to think about how each person on the WhatsApp group. Or if we have five people from U N I P O D, we can come together and say, okay, let's write a letter, so our V C, and let's see how we can, within the next one month. Actually get a V C or somebody from U N I P O D to actually back the campaign. I think we can get that done across twenty universities, just on average. By, just like, thanks, give like an, a rough estimate, right? Uh, I think that could become a real data that we could work with. So I think that's just the basic thing, but then we have to go back again to the drawing board. And let's, let's work strategically. I think that's it. Thank you very much again. I'm happy, I'm happy, let's, let's, let's build this into a global platform, that's it.
Thank you, thank you so much, Emeka. I mean, you just, you just touched on, really just opened up the conversation on the next steps. Formation of teams, um, campaign targeted at, you know, educational institutions, as universities, that, those are two things definitely that I've just added now. Um, for the, the next steps. Thanks, thanks a lot, really wonderful ideas. John, John, your, your, your hand goes up. Did you, do you, you want to speak, or you want someone else to jump in?
Hi, if, if I may just quickly say something, I, I don't want to overflow the issue, like, all of the points that have been mentioned so far is very, very interesting. And it's a good one. I think another target for us, people that should be artists, because they can push this campaign forward. So should look at getting their buy.
Okay, but, but, but as you like, you know musicians.
Yes, yes, like, popular musicians and also. Film, film industry, yes, if they can also, you know, lend their voice to this campaign, it's going to go a long way.
Oh, great, okay, 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 thanks. Kenny, please take, take note of that as well, I've also written that down. Okay, John, John, do you, do you want to speak? Thanks, 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 Laura.
Okay, uh, good evening, everyone. Um, many thanks to the uh Policy Shapers team led by. Very able, it needs a weekina. Okay, now this is it, I saw, I'm, I'm a social advocate. And anything that has to do with um, uh, that has to do with, you know, that has a social relevance, I have just seen. And um, personally, I, I've not actually put in for, put over any application for the I L T S. Yes, I, I'm not a test, anything of that kind, but I still do hope that soon, like, soon, soon, soon. I'll still be going for it, if it still remains, if it remains, um, you know, if, um, that, that, that is. If before I, I'm requested to, or I'm expected to go for it, we've not, uh, 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 this um. Advocacy has not actually got it scrapped out. We're hoping it gets scrapped out soon. So um, so being that as to, I've seen that seventy, something thousand there for a test, some, some thousand there for a test that was spent two years. And then look at the current situation, the situation of things that I look there, yeah, so, we have, let's, I need to go. Okay, and if we need to go, so what I'm going to say is, I'm going to give in, uh, putting all my, my, my best to actually ensure that we. Uh, the essence of the uh, uh, advocacy is actually achieved using my own social space, my space. As a media person, I'll give it voice, like I always say, and then another thing I'm going to say is that, um. Uh, I, I, I have other things like, uh, Salu, sorry, if I'm missing that name, Salu School. So let me get a name, uh, good, okay, Balikey, she said something, she talked about she being. And not really uh into the education policy and all of that, but she had that thing, just like every, some of the persons on the call. Actually have other areas that want to learn about the policy thing, like uh K J, of Miss K J, talked about myself too. I'm new to policymaking or policy advocacy and all of that, but any other kind of advocacy, uh, advocacy. Keen, uh, actually good at them, but I'm keen and ready to learn about policies and all of that. So I'm just going to uh say that I really want to learn more on the process that, uh, as we watch. And actually push to see that this advocacy lands us on a favorable, favorable ground, all of that. And so, um, final thought, final note, I want to say thank you to uh Olivia Mees. Yeah, that actually made the, uh, that already started it, like, you know, taking it so loud, making it so loud, putting it on BBC and all of that, and all of that. For me, as a media person. So my suggestion one, I would say that there is need for us to actually pay visits to media houses within. Now, we're not just in Portaco, we're not just in River States, I think the other people and all of those, they should be what a team over there, over the other side, over the other side. They start making physical uh, uh, presence or visibility, creating physical visibility. Media houses and public offices relevant ones to create a, a presence in those places, and then it's. That by that, it means it's going beyond the online thing, right? It's going beyond the uh, the online activism. Now, somebody did say that activism, online activism, what should always turn uh physical activity. And that's when uh the idea becomes a reality, actually, like somebody has earlier said, that idea turning to reality. So I think uh to go beyond the, 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 the online activism, and then let's make it also, uh, that, uh, the. That's a good thing, by visiting the relevant places, offices, and then the university, like somebody has also mentioned, all that, okay? Now, uh, uh, signing or giving roles or giving um responsibilities to every or any ready member of the. Task force would actually also ease the uh, the process, you know, ease the process, the burden, the stress is quite much. You know, pushing it all the way from there, right, feels to be running stuff like this, yeah? So if uh this person do this, because you have, you have strength in this, in the media, you have this, uh, good at this, do this, do this, let's make this work. I think that would be cool too. So uh, that's basically what I would have to say, I think, I think. Thank you very much, uh, many thanks to, once again, to the Policy Shapers. I want to be part of the Policy Shapers, that is my own way of, uh. Some social advocates, uh, advocating, uh, physically, the mental health, I launched the company, so very good. Want to see how we, thank you.
Thank you, thanks, thanks a lot, John, and I'll just quickly, uh, draw, draw the curtains here, just to summarize. Thank you, everyone, for your, for your time, and thank you, John. I mean, like, like I said, it's positive, it belongs to all of us, really, it doesn't just belong to the six core team members. Um, so just like Balikey's asked, and I dropped the link in there, in the chat, do well to join, join through that link. We'll be sending some information your way very, very soon. And um, I mean, Emeka's, Emeka's action point on next step is one of the strongest ones, which is making sure that we assign roles for everyone. So we'll quickly just do a Google form of that, and share in the, in the, in the group, so that everyone can start working in sub teams. And we'll be addressing various issues and working together closely. Thanks again for your time, I'll follow up with Olivia on the email. I would also follow up um with a couple of people who had volunteered to work on Conva, to make the statement cards. If you haven't sent your statement yet, the link is, is online, I think it's on LinkedIn, on Facebook and Twitter as well. So do well to submit your statement, so that we can have your statement, um, so that everyone has a voice to it, so it's not just the one person to be. Everyone is putting their voice to the, to the campaign to, to move things forward. There's also a what, a WhatsApp group. Um, if you're not on WhatsApp group, you can contact me, I feel like I have personal contact with almost everyone that's on this call. So do well to contact me, and if you want to join the task force, I'll be happy to add you to the group. So thank you again, everyone, um, really appreciate your time, appreciate your efforts. And yes, as Chindi said, let's, let's get to work and let's make it work. Alright, so bye for now, everyone, um, we'll definitely be in touch again soon.
Yeah, thank you.
Bye, everyone. Bye.